We'll call to order the regular meeting of the school board for Monday, October 27th. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Invite you to stand as you're able. Item 1A, the reading of our school board meeting norms. Dr. Hodak.
Yes. Be prepared, be on time, value and respect each other, exercise thoughtful deliberation in conversation, be professional at the board table and when visiting with the general public, speak up when the norms are not being followed, advocate on behalf of students and keep the community in mind.
Thank you. Item two is the approval of tonight's agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as outlined in your board packet. It's been moved by Mr. Palmesino and a second by Ms. Flynn. We'll take a roll call vote.
Hodak?
Yes.
Larson is absent, Manley is absent, Clevin is absent, Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Lund is absent. Berger?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no, four absent.
Motion passes. Moving on to four on the agenda, this is our public comment period. The purpose of the open meetings law is to provide members of the public with access to the meetings of a governing board of a public entity. By state law, every regular meeting of the board must include an opportunity for individuals to provide public comment. The law requires that an individual providing comment at a meeting provide in writing their name and address, which you have done. These comments must be pertinent to the district, may not interfere with the orderly conduct of the regular meeting, may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful. Individuals wishing to address the school board may speak for up to three minutes. School board members should not engage in a response or enter into a debate about any issue brought before the board during this portion of the meeting. Public comments and concerns will be directed to the superintendent of schools, who will address them in accordance with policies adopted by the board. I have one public comment card, so I'd like to invite to the podium Ms. Amanda Fackler.
Hello. Thank you so much. My name is Amanda Fackler. I'm a clinical social worker and an actively engaged researcher and professor. I'm here today as a parent of a child within our public school system, as a neighbor, and as a community member. On November 1st, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, known as SNAP, will pause. About 10% of Grand Forks population receives SNAP benefits. Two thousand seven hundred of those individuals are children under the age of 18. That means about 36% of the students attending Grand Forks Public Schools from grades K through 12 receive SNAP benefits. Those benefits, like the National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs, are provided through the USDA. That means, starting on November 1st, at least 36% of the children in our schools who will no longer receive those SNAP benefits will also lose access to free or reduced-priced meals. Twenty-seven thousand students in our community and our schools will go hungry. As a school board, it's my understanding that you serve to create and ensure a supportive environment, work to improve student achievement, ensure that all students have access to a quality education. I understand that you represent our community and its values. I also understand that hunger hinders academic performance and student achievement. Hungry children are unable to actively engage at school due to decreased concentration, decreased memory, negative impacts of hunger on mood and motor skills, all of which are necessary for success. Not only does this affect their ability to engage in the academic process, but it also impacts their future academic opportunities. In less than one week, 2,700 of our students, our children, and our neighborhoods will go hungry. I'm urging the Grand Forks School Board to allocate funding and advocate for the local city government to allocate funding to ensure that the more than 2,700 children in our programs continue to receive free and reduced lunches, in addition to meals to take home with them in the evenings and on the weekends. I'm urging the school board to work with the local government and the local community to ensure that all children and their families in our communities, our neighbors, our kids, don't go hungry. And I'd like to ask the school board to issue a statement outlining how you intend to ensure a supportive environment in which all students have access to a quality education and the support they need, including nutritional assistance, during a time when families are being denied the life-saving benefits of SNAP. Based on the current USDA max allocation for each meal, for free breakfast and lunches at 65 cents per meal, it would cost approximately $100,000 to ensure the 2,700 children in our community do not go hungry. The city budget is 229 million. I'm asking the school board to advocate for less than 0.1% of the city budget to ensure our most vulnerable children have access to a hot breakfast and a hot lunch. In closing, I'm asking the school board to issue a formal statement outlining how you intend to address the concern and to engage in advocacy with the local government and community to ensure our students and families don't go hungry during the current government shutdown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your advocacy and for this information. I would expect to hear something soon from the district and the city. Appreciate your time. Move on now to 5A. Remember, these two items under 5 are recommendations for discussion. 5A is a recap of our board retreat from October 10th, 2025. Dr. Brenner?
Actually, I'll turn it over to Brandon, since the memo came from him, but I'll participate in the conversation as well.
Thank you, Chair Berger, members of the board, Dr. Brenner. Really, this item is meant to follow throughout the year, the course of this budget realignment conversation we will have on the board meeting following the board retreat. Just a conversation to open up in an effort to be even more transparent, to ensure that it's the second or third time to be able to point people to where they can find information and make sure they know how to solicit any questions should they have them. So that's the primary role of this. This retreat marks the second of five, with the first one being August 14th. That was largely an introduction and a review or a concept of a budget realignment process, whereas on October 10th, the board really engaged with a number of different concepts, very large and a bit ambiguous at the moment, but it's really meant to help set a understanding and a set of priorities within the school district, is where do we, when we get to the details, allocate the funds and realign those to make sure that it reflects a community purpose and priority. So that process really started with high-level introduction, comments by the superintendent and myself, talking about that process, introducing 10 different con- I forget if it's exactly 10, I'll count them, a number of concepts to be discussed, and also just roles, both of the board, of administration, of community members in this involvement or in throughout the process, as well as laid out the timeline components. So I just mentioned the first two board retreats. There'll be three more following, with the next one on November 7th, then December 12th and January 16th, really with reaching some conclusions or decisions in that February timeframe. So the group heard those introductory comments, and then it was really breaking out and hearing a presentation on these 10 different, number of different concepts, two, four, five, two, four, six, seven, so 12 different concepts, hearing a presentation on those, so there's a little bit more of education and facts around each of those. There was table conversations and breakout around those, and ultimately came back together as a board to participate in a forced choice exercise, which was largely fine-tuning that tool, that mechanism that will be used to make decisions, although it wasn't used on this day to make any decisions. And then really just an opportunity for the group to even digest a little bit of what they had gone through at their tables within their own forced choice exercises as a group. But to be clear, those topics discussed, again, they're a bit, their larger buckets are a bit ambiguous, because there needs to be definition within them, but these are components that have been identified as being important topics to discuss. Diverse course offerings, class sizes, certified support staff, curriculum adoptions, co-in extracurriculars, employee compensation, support staff, building utilization, educational technology tools, Mark Sanford Support Services, gossing, and the savings goal of the 15% carryover. So those are the large buckets. It was four hours, a lot of good conversation, certainly difficult to put into a recap or bring back to this group. But one thing I'd say too, is with each of those conversations, it's an opportunity to gain perspective in all of those areas. Another way to, or one thing that was made clear to the board members and to the public with the following Herald article, was that there's a website that's meant to chronicle a lot of the conversations, that's meant to be a place to put things posted for the public to view, such as the slide deck that was used during this retreat. And there's a live link. If there are questions that people have, they can submit the question. And the purpose of that is then, we figure if you have a question, maybe others have the same question, so it will inform an FAQ or frequently asked question, and just to be continuing the conversation. But I would defer back to you, Chair Berger, as someone who attended, and if there are other comments from those who attended.
No, I appreciate that. I thought this would be an opportunity for those of us who were present for retreat number two, to offer any perspective, takeaways, some thoughts moving forward, as well as for board members who weren't able to be there, to clarify some pieces. One thing I expressed after retreat two in my own processing was, I hope that when we get to November, we can keep moving this forward and not have, okay, now we have a different group of folks. I mean, I think there were 14 or 15 from the district. You know, we had base representative, of course, we had Cindy. Jonathan's no longer here. But how do we keep this large, robust group of people with lots of perspectives moving forward and also bring other voices in so that those next four hours can be time well-spent as well? So I guess I would look to Dr. Hodak or Josh, as you know, as other board members who were there, to lift up anything that you took away, or anything particular that you wanted to add to this conversation. I have a couple of thoughts, and then we'll open it up. We have a couple of board members here who weren't able to be there, in case you have any clarifying comments. Much the same way that we do with our committee work, right? Let's start with the folks who were in that space, and of course, others from the district who have things to offer as well. But let's start with Josh or Dr. Hodak, if you have something.
I would echo your comments, and especially about the continuing to move forward. The one thing I would add is I certainly appreciated the large number of district administration and additional staff that were in the room with us, walking with us through the presentations, and then giving their perspective on all of these bucketed items, among other topics that were discussed, as to cause and effect, and what happens if we do this, pull this lever, do that. A whole lot of different information to take in, for sure.
Dr. Hodak?
Yes, I thought it was a very well-run meeting. I appreciated the presentations by everyone. I appreciated the information. However, caveat, I would like to get that information ahead of time, so I'm prepared for the meeting. But I understand why at times that, I mean, it's right up to the time of the meeting. I was glad to hear about the website. I think that's excellent. I would hope that we are tracking to see how many people are going into it. We should be able to do that. I don't want to know if there's school district employees or anything else. I would just like to know how many people are actually using that. The other thing is, is that setting those priorities that we did as a board, I would like for the next meeting that we would already immediately have a comparison of the school administrators to those 12. So where we put those 12 to where the administration team as a whole is putting those, in case, in case there is some differences there. I really believe that it's got to come from those that are in the trenches with what they're looking at as well, too. And last but not least, I think we're on the right path, and I too echo with what Dave is saying, please don't let us go backwards. Let us just keep moving forward.
Base board member Snyder, do you have anything to add, or any reflection or thought from your presence there?
I guess I would just echo the same thing as what's been said, that it was a very well-put-together meeting, and I think we've got some good stuff out of there. From the outside looking in, there's going to be some hard decisions that need to be made in the future. And I think that, like everyone has said here, going forward is beneficial. You don't want to have to go backwards and make this harder than it needs to be. So that's all I would say about it. Thank you.
I'll try to offer up one thing that hasn't been said. I always like this comment. You know, everything's been said, but not everyone has said it yet. But I do think this is another piece that I want to lift up. I so appreciated that this was all grounded in our new strategic plan, that we're holding up this mirror to, where are the priorities? Does it fit? And we do have some difficult decisions to make, but I appreciate that now the strategic plan is at your table side, at your workstation here at our board meetings, in case there's any question about the why. And of course, we all need to be grounded in the best decisions possible on behalf of all students and focused on this new vision. So I appreciate that that was a part of the meeting as well. How about from anyone who wasn't there? Anything to clarify, anything that you want to lift up, any questions that you have? Mr. Palmesino?
I would just like to get a copy of those 12 items. You know, I haven't seen those. If they're on a website, I probably haven't found it yet. But anyhow, that would be nice to get, because all I received was a budget reali- process that came in our packet.
Do you want to respond to that, Mr. Palmesino?
Yeah, and President Berger, it's just a comment, it's a direct response, but it's also really great to say, just for everybody listening here, is that on the website, it's actually featured on the ribbon at the top of the page. So you'll find it not anywhere hidden, not even one click deep. You'll find Budget Realignement Process, and that's where you can find materials such as that, including those list of concepts.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Flynn?
Was there a doodle schedule sent out, or was that just like, that was just a planned ahead, like, date?
You're asking how the meeting schedule was set? I'll defer to Dr. Brenner and to Cindy on that.
No, there wasn't a doodle.
Okay.
We just, we picked those dates.
Yeah.
Just to have some cadence to it.
I think, I, was there like four board members gone, I think? I don't know if it's possible to, I was out of town, so I couldn't, like, make it anyway. But to Bill's point, I didn't, I kind of felt like, even though I couldn't go, I didn't really know what was going on, or like, what exactly was discussed, or like, a recap. So like, this is certainly helpful, but I did have board members, or some members of the public reach out to me. One staff member who had, like, asked a follow-up question, and I was like, I, showed me a chart of something, and I was like, I have no idea what that is. So certainly, I think it's important for, like, board members or whoever wasn't there to receive some information prior to it going out, or the link or something, too, so.
Yeah, great points. I think just looking at the calendar, in October, the retreat was on a Friday, our next meeting was on a Monday, it probably just was not feasible to have this opportunity for discussion coming right back around, you know, based on when the board packet goes out, how the meeting needs to be posted. I have not looked ahead to see, maybe someone can answer this, what that routine or rhythm is going to look like for November and moving forward, to see the timeliness of, it looks like you're at the ready.
Well, and exactly right. And this first time, we took us to the second meeting in the month to turn on a recap, but we'd like to be right on the heels of it. So the board packet comes out Thursday, the retreat will take place on Friday, and then the board meeting will take place the following Monday. So the board memo will read something similar. It was, this was written this way on purpose, where it was not a lot of detail yet, but the point is to hold some time on a Monday night to recap that meeting, right on the heels of it. So you can expect that next meeting.
So just to clarify, for meetings three, four, and five, or retreats, I should say, three, four, and five, from a Friday to a Monday, we'll have the conversation in a little bit of a fresher manner, I suppose. Is a fair way to say it? Dr. Glatch?
Yes. In the meantime, for any board member that wasn't able to make it, when you see that handout, we want you to reach out to us if you have questions about it, because as Brandon mentioned, we're going to ask for that forced choice exercise to be undergone again. You tested- again. You tested the tool, but really expressed that you didn't know what you were necessarily even voting on at the time back in the August meeting. And we want to make sure that you are providing guidance to us as we move forward to make the hard decisions, so that we're all kind of lockstep on that and fully informed along the way because it is going to be hard decisions. So if you, if there's an information gap, and I imagine there might be just by reading through the slide deck, feel free to reach out to any one of us so that we can fill that in, so you can feel caught up to speed by the time we get to November 7.
Anything else for this discussion? It's very helpful, not only to figure out where we are, but this will inform how now retreats three, four, and five will work and function so that we know what to expect. Dr. Brenner?
Just a couple of other things. Leading into that retreat, we had already had our building level meetings at most of the campuses with principals and associate principals, with the exception of Wilder and Ben Franklin, which we'll have here shortly. So those principals will have their input about their building and opportunities for some efficiencies there. To Dr. Hodeck's point about the forced choice activity, we just did that last Thursday with our, all of our admin in this room. And we're seeing, we're seeing where admin landed and where the board landed. So we'll have some comparison and some analysis for you. And then just, this is probably more for the community than anybody else. You know, not only are we looking at how do we realign and how do we reduce scenarios, but we're also looking at how do we generate revenue as well. So Mike Bearmeyer, on the activity side, is looking at creating differences and variances in activity fees. We certainly have some sports that are more expensive than others. And I continue to say, football and hockey are pretty expensive sports compared to boys and girls golf. So there probably ought to be a difference in what that activity fee is instead of $75 for every activity across the district. So there might be some small ways where we can generate some alternative revenue. That's not going to, it's not going to fix our overall goal, but it's going to be helpful. Just would like to just say that I've had a couple of meetings with summer performing arts director Allison Peterson. We had a couple of really good meetings about SPA's budget. And I think you'll be happy to know that based on the number of high school credits that were generated last summer, SPA came in at $59,000 in the black. So SPA is holding their own financially. And Allison, since she has taken over the last couple, three years, has done a remarkable job of managing that budget. Those were just the other comments that I wanted to make this evening. Thank you.
Anything else to add to this discussion for tonight? Okay. As many have said, appreciate the opportunity to check in and clarify some things. Also nudge people listening to that information and to be a part of the process as we, as we look to do this challenging work together. We'll move on now to 5B, Government Affairs Committee Report. And I'll turn this over to, I believe, Mr. Anderson. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Flynn chaired this meeting.
Well, I first want to apologize that there's no introduction topic discussed. When I jumped on the Zoom call, all I could see was Dr. Brenner's face and he made a joke and I thought it was just me and him and Cindy. And so then he introduced the legislatures and I just felt very embarrassed by that. So, but we then went on to have a really good discussion about what it could be like meeting in the interim between sessions. Dr. Brenner shared some feedback on some of the new laws that were enacted and how they're actually kind of filtering out through the schools. We talked about the Bell to Bell Act law and in fact, haven't really, like, we were doing a lot of that already, but certainly talked through just some different intricacies related to the law and putting it into practice. We talked about some other funding things. And it was really good just to get face-to-face with some of the legislators to say, you know, tell us more about this. What are you seeing? I think it could be a really good opportunity for them to get a little bit more insight into what's going on in Grand Forks Public Schools and just have a good conversation as they're, you know, looking to further ahead at 2027. So, great opportunity for discussion, planning to have more conversations and I think it's a good, good time for us to connect, so.
Mr. Anderson, anything to add?
I would just add, I think, would agree with Amber that it's, I mean, a great opportunity to have the conversation and appreciate the legislators' time who join. I mean, I think we can, in the interim time, really build, through conversation, build going into the next legislative session. So much appreciated on that.
Any questions from other board members for this committee? I just had one as a matter of clarification. So this is a fairly new committee and maybe the community doesn't, doesn't know this. Maybe just a bit of the history, when it started, the purpose, how often, right? I mean, just, just a little bit of the landscape to keep this work moving forward.
Yeah, thank you for that, President Berger. The board approved this new structure last year during that 24-25 school year, leading into the 25 Legislative Assembly. And so we have three members who serve on the Government Affairs Committee. And the purpose ban, it was to meet every other week with legislators. And we moved that time around because we were finding that no matter what time we scheduled that meeting, it was really difficult for legislators. So we would, we would have eight o'clock meetings in the morning, 7:30 possibly, 12 noon. And then we decided maybe at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon when they're driving home would be a good time. But that, that wasn't a good time either. But what I will say is, you know, in particular, the three, the three legislators who attended last week, Representative Sanford, Senator Sikler, Senator Meyer, all three were very, very responsive during the legislative session, whether it was a text message, an email, a phone call, all were really responsive. And I would say, most of our local legislators, whether we agree or disagree, are responsive to those communications. So that would be the backdrop and the why behind it. And then we want to use this year as the interim to try to gain some momentum prior to the legislative session starting. And Business Manager Bonbach serves on education, I'm going to call it the Special Education Interim Study Committee, looking at the metric that is added on to the funding formula for our special education students and the cost of special education students. 20% of our kids, as you know, are on IEPs. Some of the services that we deliver are more expensive than others, but you know, once we, once we receive that payment from the state, there's still quite a funding gap, not only in special education, but in general education as well. So we're appreciative that Brandon was selected to serve on that. I would defer to Brandon if he wants to say anything more about that.
Anything to add, Mr. Bonbach?
No, I appreciate the opportunity, President Berger, members of the board, Dr. Brenner. I would just say that the interim committee's role is they get up to five meetings to really tackle a number of issues. On the agenda are three main issues, which would include the student outcomes of special education students, teacher shortages within special education in particular, and then lastly, the funding formula. And actually, our November meeting, we'll be taking up, we'll be spending the whole morning on funding formula component of that. So that'll be, that'll be interesting. The big thing I've taken away from the initial one meeting I've had is every state does it differently. And so what they're doing is, I think, doing their due diligence to ask the question of, is our approach the right approach or should we adjust that? So we'll be getting into it more over the course of these coming months.
Again, this is an item for discussion. Anything else on this conversation from anyone regarding the Government Affairs Committee? Yes, Mr. Palmesino?
Just a quick question for Brandon. Is the superintendent of schools on that committee with you guys?
Sorry, just to clarify, the superintendent, the state superintendent?
Yeah, state.
No, no, it's a legislative committee. And I'm sure that just like we've already had representation from the Department of Public Instruction, if we're asked or called upon, they would, they would interface with the committee but not seated.
You might invite him since he's a business manager. It would be nice to have him on the committee.
Well, full disclosure, with Levi Bachmeyer's nomination, I had already pinged him ahead of that meeting to say, what should, what can I bring? And actually, the superintendent of West Fargo Public Schools is seated on that committee.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for that discussion. Move on to the items for action. 6A is our consent agenda. Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda outlined in your packet. It's been moved by Mr. Palmesino, second by Dr. Hodeck. We'll take a roll call vote.
Palmesino?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lunn is absent. Flynn?
Yes.
Larson, Manley, and Clevin are absent. Hodeck?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Five yes, zero no, four absent.
Motion passes. 6B is our general fund financial statement. Mr. Bonbach?
Yeah, President Berger, members of the board, here to present the, what month is it? Sorry. For September, September financial statement here, that's the first three months of fiscal year '26, where revenues were 16.3 million and expenditures at 17.5. That puts the expenses over the revenues of 1.2 million, which is not uncommon at this point in the year. As you go through it, just a couple of things to point out. This would be the first financial statement that includes the budget that has been passed. So the numbers are adjusted in that first column of the first report. That's the one with the column header of 2025-26 budget. And when you put those revenues against the expenditures, you can see that the difference is 5.38 million. That's different than what we've talked about at 4.4, you know, in our conversations and certainly what's covered in the press. I want you to know that's the same in that we have historically, as a school district, used a special reserve fund. We've done a transfer at the end of the year. And even when we talked through these initial numbers and budgets, we talked about that number. So that, that is the net effect here. It's in the same, in the report. You can see, though, in that summary is that you currently, at this point in the year, we have 12.5% of revenues in and we have 12.9% of expenditures out. These reports don't offer a lot of insight at this moment, just because it's so early in the year, there's great variance. One way to capture that or see that is on the second report. Starts with general fund financial statement year-over-year comparison. That's where we can look at this point in the year as compared to the same point in the previous year. And they're largely, largely the same. You can see that the revenues are right about there, which would make sense. It hasn't yet adjusted for our even spring enroll, our fall enrollment, which will take place here on the next state aid payment in November. But you can see our expenditures are up, which would be expected in a part of the calculus of any negotiation or just year-over-year changes. I do include some notes on that cover page that correspond with, with below figures. And you can see here a couple anomalies that might catch your attention. I try to anticipate and just point out. So like number one corresponds to revenue in section D of the revenue section. That's the following page near the bottom. And if you were to compare year-over-year, you'd say, well, last year we had 436,000 at this point in the year and we don't have anything in at this point in the year. This year, that was related to the CTE home sale. So I try to point out those anomalies, but you'll find as you go through, much of the differences are explained by timing, by variances at this time of the year. And as the numbers get a little bit larger aggregately throughout the year, then you'll find a smoothing of that data. I don't know what else to call it, but you know, more averages. But I do point out a few of those things throughout. And then lastly, the final three pages are the graphical depiction. You can see the revenues, expenditures, and then when you look at the way the balances come together, they're down because of the way last year ended up. When we went down, it brought the starting balance down. So that's the green bar below the prior two years. Happy to answer any questions on all of that. But of course, the administrative recommendation stated on the first, on the memo, which is to approve the general fund financial statement for the period of July 1, 25 through September 30, 25.
Thank you. Questions from board members from Mr. Bonbach? Would seek a motion to approve the general fund financial statement for July 1, 2025 through September 30th, 2025. It's been moved by Mr. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Flynn. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Larson is absent. Palmesino?
Yes.
Clevin, Lunn, and Manley are absent. Anderson?
Yes.
Hodeck?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Berger?
Yes.
Marked him in the wrong spot. My apologies. Five yes, zero no, and four absent.
Motion passes. 7A announcements. Are there any announcements? Dr. Glatch?
Yeah, just want to update the board that we, this last weekend, our Fulbright Scholars, we made you aware of that wonderful exchange with our fellow educators from all over the globe departed us. So we had a nice culminating activity on Thursday night and it was just really a rich experience, I think, for everybody, life-changing experience for everybody involved. The GAP program, which is the German exchange program, has 21 students, sorry, 19 students and two faculty members that are currently in our system. And I think they're on their way home here in the next day or two. I may be off by a day or two on either side. And then we obviously prior had our Japanese exchange program from Konma City here. So lots of really great cultural celebrations and collaborations to be proud of as a district.
Thank you. I'll piggyback on, on that comment just briefly. Frau Feel shared with us that the GAP program's been going on for 35 years. And I understand this will age me, but I was a part of the very first GAP exchange in 1990 with Frau Merit and Frau Berg. We've hosted students and actually met a couple of the students from REMSEC at the Cushman Classic on Friday. So happy to be there to see all of those students as well. Any other announcements? Board requests for future consideration? Okay, we're on 7C, School Board Meeting Norms. Dr. Hodeck, how did we do? We'll take it. And we are adjourned.